It's great for me to be here again in East Pastia. And we are here as part of the series of meetings you would have heard, to account to you, the beloved people of Sankitt and Nevis. We are here because you are important. And we are here because you are the reason why Team Unity exists. We owe it to you. And because we owe you a debt of gratitude, we have been going around the country. And we will be going in every constituency on Sankitt. And next Monday, we will go as a team to Nevis to do a similar exercise in accountability. And we have organized a vote for next Monday night. So all of you from Sankitt, who are interested in being part of that historic meeting in Charleston, Nevis, you are welcome. And further details will be forthcoming by tomorrow. Mr. Ashburn will tell you what vote, and the vote cast is free. I want to thank all those who have organized for this meeting. And look how nice this meeting looks. And look how sweet this meeting sounds. We are stronger than ever as a team. And we promise you, and we told you, that we are better together, that more will be accomplished as a team. I am so happy for unity. I am so happy that so many familiar faces are here. I am so happy to see Haddis here with a team from Sandy Point. Give him a round of applause. I am so happy to see Mr. Politics here. Mr. Politics, stand. Stand and be recognized. I am so happy to see Radical Culture here. Radical Culture, stand and be recognized. The point I am attempting to make, these are the real stalwarts of unity. And they are here signaling their confidence in the performance of this government. They are here, and neither one of them has asked this government for a special favor. The only request that they have made is that we serve the people of Sankitt and Nevis to the best of our abilities. These are the persons who inspire me day by day because they are unselfish in their demands. These are not like those who are part of the parasitic oligarchy. These are not like those who if you can't put the treasury in their homes will turn their back on the cause of Team Unity. These are not like those out there who want me to allow them to play bingo with the public treasury. And I said, “No, a hole in the O.” A hole in the O. And because a hole the O, some of them get all vexed with me, but tell them I stand solid as a rock and principle and the cause of justice. And tell them, tell them they can't change one vote in Number 7. And the people of Number 7 are solid in their support. We did it before, and we will do it again. We will do it again. When you listen to the colleagues who have spoken, you, if you are honest, you will have to confess that a lot has been accomplished in so short a time. To God be the glory. When you listen and you hear in almost every area of endeavor, things have been done. Things have been done. In security, we are going forward despite the bad inheritance. Every police station in Shambal, from Hall Road, Sandy Point, even in the heartbeat of labor in St. Paul's. Dr. Douglas left after 20 years a police station unfit for purpose with asbestos in the roof. You think Dr. Douglas care? And so when those people who put their hand to the plow of unity want to turn back to go back to Douglas, they are crazy people. And that's why I say it is forward ever, backward never with Team Unity. Team Unity has come because you, the people, recognize it was the only way to preserve the integrity of the country. Team Unity came to be because it was the only answer to a good governance agenda. That is why we were barred. So when some persons out there saying like they want to teach us Team Unity, tell them Team Unity is the professor of their good governance. How they can teach us? It's we in this document spell out what good governance was about. This is the contract with the people. Manifesto 2015 to 2020. And the rate we are going. The rate we are going, and may give them a surprise, and ring the bell. Ring the bell. Because the rate we are performing, we are above average performance. And I challenge Obama. I challenge Obama to put his record with ours. There is no government in the world, no government in the world has been able to compare with us in terms of delivery. I heard Obama wail at hell of non-fulfillment in relation to many of the teams he had promised. What has happened after eight years? What has happened? Not a whole lot for the black people in America. Not a whole lot to change their circumstance in city after city. And that was the president. Eight years he had in office. We ain't even reached two years yet. We are celebrating early. But ain't two years yet. Ain't two years yet. And we will unveil on Friday over 51, over 51 promises which we have actioned. Performance matters. Performance matters because the people of the country matter more to us. That is what have happened. You flip to the manifesto cover. Guarantee that program like PEP will continue and be upgraded to STEP. Well, next Thursday, we launch STEP. Promises made, promises delivered. That is what we said we will do. Self-employment, training for permanent jobs, give people a decent wage on which to live. Who would have thought that we could have transformed this PEP? That was so out of control, that represented a hemorrhage on the purse of the treasury that cost this country over $200 million. And nothing much to shuffler it when the experts came in from the CDB. They told us at one point the program peaked as Douglas administration put on people to vote. No work, just vote in Central. Just vote in East Pastia. Just vote where you do not belong. And they put you out. Just to win. And what shall it profit a man if he gain the whole world and lose the elections? That is what he is wondering now. We can step it up. All right, ladies and gentlemen. And we said that wasn't good. We said there was need for something better. And we started by saying, “Listen, we will not turn away one soul off the PEP. But what we will ensure, that everyone and the PEP, they work a few days, work for a few days, man. And those who are not showing up for any work after an extended period of time, you get them off. No work, no pay. And we have some of them, they are still not performing to the extent we will want. So we serve notice to them. Step it up. Step it up because we moving from PEP to step up next Thursday. Step it up with your punctuality, with your discipline, with your attitude towards work. These are still important. When a government can be so callous that it pays a man to vote, that it allows a man to come at 7:00 and then turn off at 7:30 and still pay the man, it encourages an indiscipline in society for which it is hard to recover. It treats laziness as a virtue. And laziness has no place in the building of a prosperous nation. We are for a prosperous nation. And it requires everyone to make a contribution. Everyone, non-excluded, every able-bodied man must bring his energy and strength to production and contribute productively to nation building. And every woman. And we said to people a simple message which grandmother taught us. When it come around work, no pick and choose. No pick and choose. Too many people in our country are waiting for the perfect job. They want to work in the bank. And the bank ain't got no vacancy. And parents got them home and sit down. Take up your lazy self, go out and find alternative work. Because we want a productive nation. And sometimes, you know, it is good that we ain't get what we want. Sometime it is good. When I left school, I wanted to work in a bank. I never get the chance. But look where I am today. No bad wind ever blows. And I have always said to my constituents, don't send out one application. Send out as many applications everywhere. You get the job here, take that job. And when something better comes, you are free to move. You move with some knowledge of work, some sense of values. That is what we must do. And I say even to parents who are concerned, I say, “Your young child should be planning to go off to university. This job in a sense should be a real transitionary job as they prepare themselves to go off to study. So don't talk about perfection in terms of job. There are jobs out there for people to do. Even now as we speak, we have over 100 jobs going and begging in the national security. Policemen, Defense Force, and of course, the rest of the fire services. If you have a young, able-bodied son at home, not doing no work, send him to fill out an application because you have to make a start somewhere. And this is a good start when the young man in the context of our security challenges says that I will work in defense of law and order because I heard Saki say it is the most fundamental job to the preservation of society. What better calling could there be? What better calling? And that is why the government has been reaching out. That is why for the last two years we gave the security forces their largest budget ever in the history. That is why this year we have expended already $5 million to bring the CCTV cameras all around Pastia and Shadwell and Khyon and Charleston because there must be peace in the land again. Peace in the land. And we are saying these investments are important. And so we encourage all and sundry, all and sundry, to become a champion for law and order. And if you're a champion for law and order, no drugs in your house. If you're a champion for law and order, no guns in your house. If you're champions for law and order, your children not been used to trade in drugs, you stamp it out. And all of us have to better get serious because there will be no prosperity if the country not at peace. And for too long, too many of us have turned a blind eye. Too many of us have not stood on the face of law and order, stood in support of it. We want to do half no half. Half no half, the fruit no ripe. Half no half, one foot in, one foot out. Oh, Lord, oh, Lord. Oh, Lord, when criminals doing foolishness in the land, the agents of law and order must kneel forcefully and restore law and order. No apologies. No cowards in law enforcement. One rule. Whenever the agents of law and order confront the agents of lawlessness and illegality, the agents of law and order must survive, must win. I make this point and this. Team Unity ain't got no gang. You make a this gang, X gang, Blood gang, Blue gang, but not Team Unity gang. Because it doesn't create the society that we promise. And not just we are being hard, we have to be realistic. We can't play games with the security of the land. You, every citizen, must be able to walk your street any hour of the night. You must be able to go home without looking back and looking through your side and wondering if it's too late to go home. That is the country I want. A peaceful country, man. That is what we are fighting for. I have told the story and some people remembered the good old days of Bowie Skaloff. We used to call that dumping a Jumbi picture. Our scary movie. And you small, and your grandmother may say you smell your piss because you stay out late. You go on to watch the movie. And when you watch the movie, it's a scary movie. But when you come home, you feared to go home up the mally for light wasn't so flourish here. And you're looking back. You like something, a spirit. I hear Mr. Politics say, “Jumbi. A Jumbi.” That was the thing that you feared, an evil spirit. Not that somebody will come out of hiding, begin to shoot. And in our situation where a man will go in Charleston and shoot in front of a church, we know we have to drive a lion in the sand. Peace and security. But as we do that, we reach out to them. We let the police do their work. The police said they will meet with the gangs. Well, that is the police option. But the police have to speak the law. Only one law will be preserved in the country. But we say in addition to that, we are reaching a helpful hand. So if they want to turn from that life of lawlessness, we will not leave them alone. We will provide the lands all over the country, from Green Hill to Wingfield Road. We will fence the land for them. We will ensure that the Department of Agriculture provide them with the plants for propagation. We will pay for them to get workers and their land. We will do all that in the name of peace and to give them a viable option. We have determined, and Justice Hamilton gave me his ministry, 75 acres of land already identified. So if you have them at those stupidness, we have offered an alternative. We'll offered an alternative. But it's not just that. We are saying to our social development department, look out for the children. Look out for the children. We are appealing to the churches to help build a compass for young people, our young girls, and our young boys so that they can become disciplined and productive members of our society. We are returning the country to a values-based system for the betterment of all. So we have 75 acres already identified. And we will announce them at a later date. So if you have a friend up in the hills in Phillips and they say, “Boy, that they too chancey.” Because when you really look at it, they've risked their lives when they involve in illicit activities. They can't go freely around the country, a small country like this. It is not worth it. And we are giving you a part that could help you to a better place. And we will support you all the way. Not just part of the way, all the way we will give you the support. That is why we gave and set up the First Start Program, you know, to help small people find a way. And many of them have benefited. Teachers, farmers, fishers, over 427 persons have benefited. 100 of them out of Nevis. Nevis get in its face here. Give a round of applause. 50 from East Pastia alone. So we are looking out for our people. The opportunity is coming. I want to say, when you look at us, judge us by performance. Judge us because Gata there, Douglas mess up the sugar workers' gratuity, Team Unity fix it. Douglas paid 968 persons. We have paid so far 2,003 families. Gata is one of them. Vivier Samuel is one of them. And I had a sense of pride. Vivier stand up a little bit. That is she. When I saw her move to the president of Venezuela to say, “Thank you, well, presidente.” An auditory woman denied by the rejected administration, found the presence and acceptance in front of a government. Ah, and dumping a one. Your one too. All right. All right. See, he get to talk. Yes, everybody talking. Yes, yeah. So we want to thank him, but he is a stalwart. That was a man at every Team Unity meeting was the last to leave, making sure that the leadership was safe. Give bumping, a round of applause. I want to say thank you to those people from East Pastia for your support for Ian Patrice Leiber. It was a pleasure for me canvassing in the alleyways and the streets of East Pastia on behalf of Ian Patrice Leiber. It was a pleasure to go to John Street and Neverson Street and George Street. It was a pleasure to have Kanta with me, even without Patrice on some occasions. It was a pleasure for me to do the work that I did to ensure victory. Victory for the team. I remember canvassing a citizen from Eastern Europe. And he said to me, “I fled my country because democracy was challenged. I was never interested in politics except as a hobby. But since you have come to speak with me and I've examined what the Douglas administration is doing, I will be voting for a change. So all of you who had faith in the idea of Team Unity, I say thank you. For all of you who made it happen, I say thank you. May God bless you and may this government always stay strong on the side of the powerless and the poor, on the side of the young, on the side of the infirm, while we help those of our citizens to take up the challenge of self-empowerment. One note of caution for the year so far. We have been challenged by traffic accidents. Just today, another young child in Tabernacle was knocked down. Thank God, still alive. We want to let the child's mother, Patrice, know and the father know that we are concerned. And we have invited the police to relook again the traffic regulations and to see what we can do to buttress the support for persons, particularly our children at our schools, particularly for the people coming out of our health centers and our hospitals and our churches. We invite all the drivers, whiskey included, to drive with caution. Drive with caution, particularly around those sensitive places. Thank you again, Jamdown, because you gave me a slogan which I shall end on. I ending a whopping up now. I ain't say all work, I just say, “But you can't talk all.” The strongest message I wish to bring is that Team Unity is an idea that will never die. Team Unity is a way to go. And the next election, don't fool yourself. Don't get imaginary. Don't hallucinate. The next election will be a contest between the rejected Douglas Party and Team Unity. That is what it will be. Choose this day which side you will be on. And let your actions speak louder than words. Because as Jamdown said, we worked too hard to put Team Unity together. And we will not allow them to mash it up. We will not. And before they mash it up, before it's time, a hole in the O. B-I-N-G-O. I give them up to the B and a hole into the O. The O will be released to start the East Past terminal in Pastia. The O will release to give you homes. The O has been released to build the oncology center. The O has been released to shelter the students of Pastia High. The O has been released to pay off the IMF debt created by the Douglas fishing. And with all of that, we still have a surplus. To God be the glory. To God be the glory. Thank you, God bless you. Thank you, God bless you.